Good evening, everybody. Today is November 6, 2017, and this is a Moscow City Regular Council meeting. I thought I would start with Jim.
Would you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim.
And I have got a Veterans Day proclamation that I will read everybody here that's here today. Whereas, November 11th is the anniversary of the Armistice signed by the Allies and the Germans in 1918, which ended World War I after four years of conflict. And whereas President Woodrow Wilson issued the first Armistice Day proclamation in November of 1919 and set the tone for future observances by observing that, "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with the solemn pride and heroism of those who have died in our country's service and with gratitude for the victory, both because of this thing from which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in councils of the nations." And whereas the name was changed from Armistice Day to Veterans Day by an act of Congress in 1954, when then-President Eisenhower called on citizens to observe the day in honor of all who have served in America's wars through the years. And whereas more than 131,000 veterans of our nation's military reside in Idaho and almost 5,000 of them live in our area. And whereas our nation is indebted to the service men and women who have made great sacrifices, endured long absences from loved ones, and suffered injury or death to protect our homes and families. And whereas Idaho National Guard 126th Engineers in Moscow were organized and federally recognized on April 26, 1929 as Troop K, 116th Cavalry, an element of the 24th Cavalry Division. And whereas Veterans Day is an opportunity to honor our nation's veterans and 126th Engineers for their sacrifices. Now therefore, I Bill Lamerton, Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2017 as Veterans Day in the City of Moscow, and I urge all citizens to reflect upon the sacrifices made by America's military personnel to preserve and promote enduring peace around the world. And with that being said, there's an event at the University on November 11th from 6 to 9:00. There's a Veterans Appreciation Dinner at the Bruce Pittman Center. That's free to all veterans, plus one guest. And I will not unfortunately be able to attend because I have another commitment that I have engaged in, and the keynote speaker will be Colonel Downing. So that'll be a fun event. So again, I will mention that at the end of the meeting during reports. With that, I will move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim and a second by Catherine to approve the consent agenda as it is. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we will move on to item number two, Staff Recognition Report. Gary, do we have anything tonight, sir?
We have none tonight, sir.
Okay, Mayor's appointment. I have none of those this evening as well. So we will move on to item number four, which is public comment and mayor's response period. This is a 15-minute period that we allow for folks to speak about anything that they wish to speak about, as long as it is not on tonight's agenda or something that is in front of the Board of Adjustment and/or planning and zoning. So please come forward and state your name and address if you would, please. We're clipping right along, we're seeing none of that. I guess we will move on to the next thing, which is item number five, Walmart Community Grant Application, Shop with a Cop. Chief James Frye. Chief, how are you this evening?
Good, Honorable Mayor, Council. Thank you for letting me present real quick. This is our second time we've come before you for the $2,500 grant through Walmart for Shop with a Cop. We, last year, we had over 30 kids and about 20 police officers, and we spent about four hours with them wandering around Walmart and doing some shopping for their family and for themselves. It's a great opportunity for us as police officers to spend time with some kids who don't always get to see us on a positive note always, and it's just a great community event, and we'd like to ask for approval for that.
Well, Chief, one of the neat things, I think, for kids to see our police, men and women in uniform, and know that they're not only there for protection, but they're friends of theirs, and I think that's a big deal, is for kids to see those as growing up to become adults.
I had wanted you to explain how you get matched to the kids?
It's just kind of first come, first served. As the kids come through, we have all the police officers stand there, and we just start going up, and we introduce ourselves, and we start going through the store. So it's really not, you know, there's no matchup that says, you know, this police officer's going to go with that kid or whatever. We just, we just kind of have fun, and we pick kids and we go. So last year, we did collaboration with Leitau County, Idaho State Patrol, and Fish and Game, so there was a huge group of different law enforcement officers there.
Chief, and this is on December 9th, 2017, so for everybody out there to know that.
Yep.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we ratify the submittal of the application for the Walmart Community Grant Program for $2,500 to host a Shop with a Cop event in Moscow.
Three seconds.
Okay, we've got a motion by Gina and a second by Catherine to ratify the submittal of the application of the Walmart Community Grant Program for $2,500 to host a Shop with a Cop event in Moscow. I'll start the roll with you, Gina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Before you go, Chief, the newsletter for the Leitau Recovery Center gets sent out, and I saw that you can also have coffee with a cop, and I thought you might want to...
Yeah, that's coming up. I talked about having that event, you know, about a year and a half ago when I first became the chief.
Yeah.
And we're going to start it at the recovery center, and then I've also teamed up with the Chamber, and we'll be continuing to do that about every other month, and we'll do it at different locations around the community.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Okay, well, I may as well stay up there, Chief, because the next thing on the agenda is the 2018 Idaho Child Passenger Safety Grant. That's with you and Marie Miller, Officer.
Yeah, and I'm going to have Marie come up and explain the program. It's been going since 2003, but I want to give a little bit of kudos to her and to the Police Department. So Carmen McKinnon, who oversees this program, she wrote and said that Marie runs a very tight ship and is on the spot, and we have one of the best programs, if not the best, in the state of Idaho. We are kind of the, for no better term, flagship of this program, and we actually are what other agencies are looking at on how to operate this program across the state. So Marie's done a great job, and I'd like for her to be able to present that.
Okay, come on up, Marie. How are you this evening?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you for having me and City Council. So I've been involved with the Car Seat Program since about 2003. I was brought in by Art Lindquist, who's now a sergeant, who started the program in Moscow. And he also was kind of fundamental in starting the program in this area because he worked with a team down in Lewiston who started the whole thing. And so he really deserves the credit for starting it and bringing me onboard. And we've tried to grow it every year since then by training more technicians. And for those of you that don't know, Car Seat Technician goes through a four-day training where they learn how to install every car seat in every car for every kid, and it's long and involved, and they do great work. Just as an example, I was off on vacation, and a gentleman came into the Police Department and wanted a car seat check, and I hooked him up with a technician at Nissan, Quad Cities Nissan, and they ended up doing it someplace else. But they have, we have lots of partners community-wide who help us with this program, which is really awesome. They ended up at Spence Hardware, who actually moved some of their pellets out of the warehouse so they could pull the car in because it was pouring down rain that day. And anyway, that child went away with, that family went away with two car seats because their children were in very unsafe situations. So just having, you know, a point of contact at the Police Department where I can call a tech and say, hey, can you, you know, meet with this family and do a car seat check? And then I provided the seats for them from the grant that we get from the state, which comes, you know, from the federal government, and then they distribute it to all the areas. And our area is District 2, Health District, so it goes all the way from Grangefell up to the northern border of Leitau County.
I got a question for you, Marie, because you'd mentioned Spence, as you mentioned Nissan. Do we have a list of those technicians that are available to do that throughout our city somewhere? Is that on our website?
I have an email list where I can just shoot out an email to all of the active techs in the area, which is generally what I do. We also have a brochure that we give out to people that has all the techs listed with their contact information, and I would be happy to make that available to you as soon as I update it.
Yeah, I think that'd be pretty neat to know.
Put it on the website?
What's that?
Put it on the website?
Yeah.
That would be a good thing. We also have many...
You know where you may run into things like that, too, is even from, more from, sure, parents would do that with the kids, but you know, like grandparents, for example. I mean, these seats are different from what they were a couple of decades ago.
Yeah, and we do a lot of car seat checks for grandparents, and what we get sometimes is grandparent will come in with a brand-new car seat and say, I'm going to pick up my grandkid in Spokane. And normally, we require a kid to be there, but it's, but now we have dolls that we keep at the Police Department so that we, and we've got, you know, little ones and big ones, so that we can teach the grandparent or the parent how to correctly install the child in the seat, and then they go up and pick up their grandkid.
Yeah, that might seem like a little thing, but it actually is a big thing, you know? You have a question?
At the committee meeting, you gave some of the numbers about how many, yeah, people that you had been able to help.
So every year, part of the grant is we have to do a yearly report, so this is my report. It has a lot of stats in it, and in 2015, we distributed 94 car seats to families in District 2. In 2016, and I did this a little different, so I have to search for the numbers. It was 220.
Wow.
So it went from 94 to 220. And part of that, it's, it kind of has to do with what's going on politically, too, because our numbers went up drastically between 2015 and 2016 because a child down in the reservation was killed and because they weren't in a car seat. And so our, we had, we got more technicians down there, and they've been just giving away seats like crazy. They've been really working hard, and that's, a lot of the increase was reservation-related families, which is great because they really need those resources. We did 238 car seat checks in 2015. Now, a car seat check might also include a car seat distributed, but not necessarily. So it might be a family coming in with, you know, a couple of children that are already in car seats, and we check those seats, and they're fine. And there might be a few things wrong, or they might have questions, they can't get it tight, and we help them with those kind of things. And then if they do need a new car seat and they can't afford one of their own, we'll provide one and we'll ask for a donation towards the replacement cost of the seat. So in 2015, again, it was 238. In 2016, it was 472.
Wow, really?
So lots more seats checked, yeah. Yeah, we're not going to be quite as high this year because we lost a few technicians, but we're trying to, you know, put feelers out to get more law enforcement officers certified. Last year, we certified an ISP trooper for the first time in probably 10 years. So that's a good thing. We also provide lots of information to the families. We have a program called the Whale Program, which is statewide, stands for We Have a Little Emergency. It's an envelope that has a sticker on it that goes on the car seat, and then stickers that go around the vehicle, and on the sticker that goes on the car seat is emergency contact information for the child in case the driver's incapacitated. And last year, we gave away, like, 792. So we give those, we give more of them away than we do car seat checks. We go to Walmart or different fairs and whatnot. We have information booths, and we hand out stuff. So that went up drastically from the year before as well. So we have many, many area partners, have a list of them, which is, this is, you can see, this is just a typewritten list of all those, all those people, and some of them are car dealers, Lewiston, Health Department, Fire Department, Police Departments, all the area hospitals, Police Care Network, Walmart. Pretty much anyone that we ask for help will help us because it's a good program and serves the community really well. So it's, yeah, so this year, the grant is a little bit different, where we want to apply for the grant again. Because things are uncertain at NHTSA, they don't know how much money they're going to get for the grant. So they are offering $5,000 to buy car seats and then additional money for trainings. So our grant is asking for that $5,000, and then additional money for the trainings that we're going to do next year to not only certify new car seat technicians, but also to continue, like, ongoing training of them, and ongoing training for the instructors of which, and we have six instructors just in this district, mostly in Moscow, Pullman, and one in Hooper, Washington. So we have quite a good group of people to train other technicians.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Questions for Marie. I think it's a great program, and the numbers are speaking for themselves, and safety seats for kids and the safety checks, and teaching grownups how to do it, make sure they're in properly is a big thing.
Eighty-five to 95% of the seats that we check are incorrectly installed or used.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Oh, I remember something you talked about in committee was when people can get checked. Not normally necessarily the safety fairs, but how, what's the easiest way to find out how to get checked?
Right now, probably the easiest way is for them to call me.
Oh, okay.
Because then I can send out, if I can't do it, I can send them to somebody, I can, I can get ahold of people that can do it. So we also have an instructor at the Fire Department, but he just started there, and his schedule's kind of crazy. So we're trying to work on getting more technicians in Moscow. Right now, we have more in Lewiston and Pullman, actually, than we do in Moscow. So Gritman also has technicians, and Pullman, Fire, Police, and Hospital.
So through your email?
Yeah, or they can call me on my work cell.
What is the number of that?
It's 208-310-2774.
Thank you. I wonder, Marie, if it would be smart maybe to partner with, like, the Chamber of Commerce and other places in order to get the word out? Because I wonder sometimes if parents or somebody may be a little bit embarrassed because they think they're dumb about not knowing how to hook these things up. And I know, and they're kind of interesting, they're a little tricky. I mean, my grandkids taught me how to hook things up because they're a little, it's a little bit different unless you're working with them all the time and familiar with it. So they may be feeling a little awkward about not knowing how to do it, just thinking, oh, this should be a simple thing.
Well, and a lot of them, I think, not only that, but they don't know that they don't know.
Well, that's, there you have it.
All they know is that they did the best they could, and, and the stats show, State Farm did a study a few years back that shows that even if you're using the car seat incorrectly, the child is still so much safer than if they're not in a car seat at all.
Well, that brings up another good point. Even local insurance companies, you know, State Farm and Farmers and places like that that sell car insurance, you'd think that they would, you know, seems to me like, anyway, so.
Well, actually, when I started in this program was the year that John Kimberling and I started the Officer Newville Kids Safety Fair, and that's what it was all about, was State Farm partnering with us to put on the safety fair specifically to do car seat checks. I mean, when it started, it was pretty much just car seat checks and John, you know, doing his little table thing, and then it grew to what it is now. It's kind of amazing. So, yeah, I haven't really reached out to other insurance agencies, but I'm going to meet with the chief and talk about some options just because we, we're going to need more money if $5,000 is all we get because the demand is just there. We got $5,000 extra money this year from the state, so we got $15,000 total for car seats, and we spent it all. And we only have, I think, I've got maybe 25 car seats left in our storage room. So the demand is certainly there.
Okay, Walter, you?
For those of you that didn't remember the Marie's cellphone number, you might call the non-emergency number of the Moscow PD.
Yeah, you can always ask.
Which is 882 cops and ask for the lady that does the child's safety seats.
That's me.
And they will find her.
Yes, they will.
882 cops.
Okay.
Anything else?
Other questions for Marie?
With that, Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the proposed funding request to accept an anticipated award of $9,500 from the Idaho Transportation Department Office of Highway Safety.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Walter and a second by Gina to approve the proposed funding project to accept an anticipated award of $9,500 from the Idaho Transportation Department Office of Highway Safety. And I'll start with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Marie, for your excellent work on this. Okay, we will move on to item number seven, Idaho Community Development Block Grant. Elisa is here with us. Hi, Elisa.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. So we have a new grant application we're proposing. We're bringing forth to you tonight an Idaho Community Development Block Grant request, and this is a category that has been with the Idaho Department of Commerce for a while, but they didn't start allowing fire trucks until probably three or four years ago. And so we have identified this as an option for the city, as we all know that our fire rescue vehicles and fire pumpers are no longer NFPA compliant based upon their age and the inability to order parts and get them in a timely manner. So we identified this program as one we could apply for. The maximum is $500,000, and the last pumper that we purchased or that we have on order right now was $514,000. So the price may, as I spoke with Rick and Fleet today, be up a little bit over this next year. They'll be doing another round of procurement guidelines for the Galveston-Houston Consortium that we are now allowed to work with to purchase those through without having to go through a separate procurement process. And so we'll be preparing the application, and there are some requirements that we have to follow under the Idaho Community Development Block Grant Program. And also, I wanted to mention, we are eligible for this program because we are over 51% low to moderate income. The City of Moscow, under the 2010 census, was 53.65%, and that does allow us to apply for these funds. Anything lower than the 51%, you're not allowed to apply under certain categories under the block grant programs. So I'll be working with the Fire Department and the Fleet Department in putting this application together, and we have a couple of other items that are required under the Community Development Block Grant to also have you approve tonight. We must also approve the Citizens Participation Plan, which was attached to your staff report tonight, and also the certifications and assurances to apply, which apply under the Civil Rights Compliance items for this program. The grant application is due on the 17th, and so we are going to be having a public hearing on Monday during the Public Works Finance Committee, which is also a requirement. So I just wanted to mention that at that time, at 3 o'clock on Monday at the Public Works Committee Finance, Public Works Finance Committee, we'll be doing a short, just public hearing, and we'll have the draft application available, and we'll have a time for people to ask questions and to have public input on the process.
Questions for Elisa from Council?
Well, mighty quiet. I'll bite. Well done.
I learned a lot from Rick and Fleet today, let me tell you. So.
How you know fire trucks?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the submittal of a funding request to the Idaho Department of Commerce under the ICDBG Grant Program in the amount of $500,000 to assist with the purchase of a new fire engine under the Public Facilities Funding category, and also in that that we approve the certifications and assurances and the Citizen Participation Plan and authorize the mayor to sign both.
Second.
We've got a motion by Walter and a second by Catherine to approve, to submit a funding request to the Idaho Department of Commerce under the Idaho Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $500,000 to assist with the purchase of a new fire engine as well as to approve the certificates and assurances and Citizens Participation Plan and to allow the mayor to sign off on. Is that correct, Walter?
Yes, sir.
Start the roll with Gina.
Aye.
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 Okay, very good. Thank you.
And I just, I will mention that the, we do have matching funds available in the FY '18 budget that were already approved, so we are set for that.
Okay, more information to come on Monday then, next Monday. Very good, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number eight, the Approval of Info Send Contract for Utility Billing. Gary Reedner has the podium. Gary, how are you this evening?
Good, Your Honor, thank you. Let's see if I can remember how to run this. Okay. What you have before you tonight is a contract with a company called Info Send, and Info Send is a company that we have solicited a proposal from that to take our utility billing, and I will show those to you first. This is our current utility billing. It is a single card, front and back. What you see on here is what information about what the billing is, the readings, what your bill is, what the current amount due is, due date, that sort of thing. This small insert here is the back of the card. For years, the Council has requested, would it be possible to expand the use of these, our utility billing? They're getting mailed out every month, we're paying postage. It'd be great if we could get some additional information, such as current usage, not only current usage, but past usage, so that rate payers could determine if there's any opportunities to perhaps conserve, so on and so forth. So we looked several times at purchasing a letter folder, envelope machine, so on and so forth, and it was really pretty expensive. Kind of died for several years, and then the question came up again, would it be possible to outsource this? And this, I believe the City of Pullman uses this same service, Twin Falls uses this same service, the Info Send. So this is what we have now. This is what it would look like, and I'm sorry if it's not totally readable, but it gives us the opportunity to give a usage history, special messaging if we want. We can add additional inserts. For instance, if there is something coming up, could be the opening of Farmer's Market, we could put an insert in these billings every month or when the monthly goes out in order to advertise that, if we had a special city program, or the city wanted to implement a citywide newsletter, you could do that as well. You can add contact information, essentially two pages. You can add more pages if you like for additional cost, and it includes a return payment envelope for those folks who desire to return their payment, or there's still the automatic funds transfer electronic payment for those who utilize that today. So this is what it looks like today, is you can see much more information than you get in that little card. So there's a whole bunch more we can put in there. Okay, so what is the impact of this? The impact is $29.21 per month, $2921 per month, and it includes all of what you see under here. Personnel costs, postage, supplies, software, additional inserts as desired will be at a cost plus the bulk mail covers that as well. Now, how does that compare to what we pay today? It's all broken down over here. Right now, our utility billing clerk, the time that she spends, estimated time on these, is about $4,506. Now, that is not per month, that is what she spends on it per year. And we also had a part-time person up till about two years ago that, since we've spread that work out on the rest of the staff, so we don't do that anymore. So ultimately, it costs, it's almost an annual net out, but with the additional costs or the additional capacity that you get with the Info Send Agreement and the Info Send materials, we think it's a better deal. So it's, it isn't quite as, doesn't cost exactly the same, but we feel for the small additional amount that it provides a bunch... amount that it provides a bunch more information. Additionally, what happens from a technical standpoint is that the city will calculate up the bills, they will transmit an electronic file to InfoSend that will then produce the billings and send them out. So it takes that entire process away from the city staff. So, that's what we've got, we have a contract in front of you, and we'd ask the Council to approve it.
I've got a question, Gary, on that usage history, usage history.
Yes.
On that bill, could you go back to that page?
You bet.
Where would that be located? I mean, we can't see anything because it's too small.
Yeah.
Where would you?
Likely would be here. Typically, you'd have two years of history, and you could see where you were going from there.
If you were using, if you were using more water or less water, that type of drills?
You can also, I've seen some of the bills, Your Honor, that have what the mean temperature is, so how much rainfall we've had, all of those things, so you could get some good use out of your bill rather than just pay this amount.
Well, if you, for example, if you had a dryer, the previous year was a wetter year, and this year was a drier year, your usage would be up, and that would explain maybe why your bill was a little more, something like that.
Yeah, additionally, what we're trying to do, and we will be bringing back to you, is a change to the fee resolution, only to the definitions. We now measure volume of water in cubic feet, and we'd like to go to gallonage because people understand gallons more and have been converting it, a lot of folks convert it to just make it easier to use.
Walter?
We will continue to, we're not going to change out our meters. The meters will still read in cubic feet, we'll convert it over and bill it in gallons.
Exactly.
I was just curious, of InfoSend, it says, you know, it's a company out of California, are there any Idaho companies?
We looked, and we tried to keep it local, and we spent quite a bit of time working with the local vendor, could not come. These folks specialize in this, and they've got the cost down as cheaply as they can be. As I said, Twin Falls and Pullman both use this vendor. And the other thing that makes it good for us is it also works with our accounting software, Springbrook, which is out of Portland, Oregon, we've been using them for about, oh, 15, 16 years, and that runs our entire city financial package. This program fits right in with that, there's a Springbrook module that fits with it. So it should be pretty seamless.
Gina?
I really am enthusiastic about the idea that we could get some more communication with the citizens about things that are happening, or neat little, I love the opening of the Farmer's Market idea, I think that's awesome. So I am, I'm going to support this.
I just had a question about the staff person that was doing this work.
Yes.
What happens with that person?
Longer coffee breaks. No, just kidding. We have a lot of stuff to do.
The look on the mayor's face was priceless.
You know, the thought that was going through the mind wasn't appropriate for the television needs to get out.
No, we have, we've got some programs we're trying to implement down there that will take additional time. For instance, we talked about doing some additional internal auditing in order to try and track our expenses better. Unfortunately, it's a pretty time valuable task, so if, anytime we can free up off something that is just a manual job like this, tearing cards and putting them in the mail, if we could use that person's talents to actually seek out ways to be more efficient, that's what we'd like to do.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions for Gary? Gina?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the InfoSend contract.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Gina and a second by Jim to approve the InfoSend contract. Start with Walter.
A question for Gary, and you may have said it, and I missed it, when can people expect to see this, the first bill?
We hope, and I'm not sure how the gallonage situation is going to turn out, but we're expecting that these will go out in January of 2018 for December 2017 billings.
Okay, thank you. I'll vote aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to item number nine, which is refinance of the Series 2008 sewer revenue bonds. Gary, you have the floor on this one as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll take that down. I do not have a presentation on here, right? At least I don't think I do. Nope, that is the only presentation. This is particularly exciting, especially for those of you who are involved in finance. This is a situation where, for pretty minimal dollars, the city can save its ratepayers significant dollars. And this is a proposed refinancing of our Series 2008 wastewater treatment plant sewer revenue bonds that were issued, obviously, in 2008. They're a 20-year bond, they come halfway through maturity in May of 2008, or 2018, at which time they can be called. Calling means that the issuing entity can redeem those bonds and either sell them or essentially call them back and buy them back and save money. So what's happened since 2008, the cost of bonds, the interest rate affiliated with bonds or associated with bonds, has fallen quite a bit. You recall, we had a, our previous refinancing bonds were for our Series 2011 sewer revenue bonds, wastewater treatment plant sewer revenue bonds, which ended up saving us quite a bit of money when we reissued those. You can only reissue them on the call dates, so the call date for these bonds is May 2018. So what we've done is we've retained Piper, or excuse me, Piper Jeffrey in Boise, Eric Harringer, to be our financial consultant on this. He's the one who is running the project. So the financial consultants took our current debt, and the package that you have in your packet is an RFP, which is sent out to banks that the city does business with, offering to allow them to bid on the refinancing refunding package. What the hope is, is that their proposals, as they come back, will be at a lower rate than what the bonds are today. Estimated, and if you look at the different proposals and the different materials in your packets, there are different issuance you can do, you can do a public issuance, a private placement, or you can place them through the Idaho Bond Bank. The public placement is quite a bit more expensive, you don't get quite the interest savings, and it's a long process. The Idaho Bond Bank is the longest process, but is a little cheaper than the private placement. Private placement, which essentially is one financial institution coming in and purchasing the entire bonding issue, or the entire debt issue. They would come in, it's a very short process, it is competitive interest rate, not quite as much as you would expect from the Idaho Bond Bank, but right now, bonds are at historic lows, so it makes sense to get this done as quickly as possible and lock that interest rate in. If this goes through, you'll notice that the date that the proposals are to come back to the city is November 15th, so between November 15th and our council meeting, I believe it's December 5th, we should be bringing you a package back for your formal acceptance. What's happening now is if we do not get proposals back, which are acceptable to the city, then the bonds do not need to be called. So what, one of the other nice things about this is that it does not extend the length of the bonds, there's still a 20-year bond in total, and the savings, as you can see from the documentation, is between $300,000 and $340,000 over the remaining life of the bond, about $30,000 to $34,000 per year, which would save ratepayers money, not saying the rates are going to go down, but those, the savings can then go into some of the projects that you would have to levy additional rate increases for. So it's a good deal all the way around, it does not cost the city very much at all to do this, and the savings are quite significant.
Very good. Catherine?
My question is just, since I'm new to the calling back of bonds, when's the last time that the city did this?
It was in 2011. We reissued them as Series 2011, they were incurred in 2001. Again, the way you issue, or the way the city has issued our bonds is, we have an A-plus bond rating. We got that when we went to, I believe it was Standard and Poor's, if I recall, in San Francisco, and they looked at the cities, the way the cities run, they looked at our assets, they looked at our financials, they looked at our governance, and they said, yeah, we will rate you A-plus.
And they also look at your total debt.
You bet. And the city does not have significant total debt. So when we issued those bonds, they were a public sale, so there was an actual bond sale. And the terms of the bond were that they were a 20-year bond, callable in 10 years. That gives the municipality the flexibility, if you issue them at a certain rate, for instance, if bond rates are high when you sell them, as in 2008, they weren't exceedingly high, but they were, they were marginal. Well, since then, bond rates have come down, we'd like to take advantage of those lower interest rates. In 2011, of course, 2001, bond rates were pretty significantly high, so the same thing, we could issue them for less in 2011. Now, the opposite could be true as well. You could sell them when they're low, and then you don't have to call them back, that's up to the option of the issuer. So it gives some flexibility, it's just worked out in this situation that the bond rates or the fluctuations of the market have worked in favor of the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter?
Gary, just to make sure that I'm clear, we have already put this refinancing out on the street.
Yes.
We're looking for responses by November the 15th to see what the market will tell us.
Yes.
And we're looking at all three, private placement, public, and the bond bank?
No, just private placement.
Just private placement. So the action you're looking for tonight is not to approve refinancing, but to approve consideration of refinancing, is that more correct?
Certainly.
Because this will be brought back to us?
Absolutely.
And say, here's, here's what we've got?
You will approve the proposal at that time.
Correct, okay.
When I draft, when I crafted the action, it was to approve the refinancing process.
The financial service agreement.
Yeah.
Ratify the financial.
Well, it's ratify the agreement and approve refinancing of the Series 2008. I guess I'm just being picky here.
Consideration is fine.
Consideration of refinancing.
It will come back to you for final approval.
Okay. If, Mr. Mayor, if no one has any other questions, then I would make the motion that we do ratify the financial services agreement and approve consideration of refinancing refunding of the city of Moscow's Series 2008 sewer revenue bonds.
Second. Okay. Walter made the motion, Jim seconded it, to ratify the financial service agreement and approve the consideration of refinancing and refunding of the city of Moscow's Series 2008 sewer revenue bonds. Start the roll with Gina.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, we'll move forward with that, Gary, and then he'll let us know later on. Okay.
We win it all.
That was the last of our items, we're going to go on to reports. I'm going to start with you, Catherine.
Okay.
Tonight.
The most important meeting, well, I got transportation coming up, but Parks and Rec had a really interesting meeting because the Indian Hills Park is getting finished, and you probably saw the pictures that Dwight sent out. Yeah, it's very exciting. And then that commission is working on their master plan update, and so Dwight has all of the commission members reading what's coming up, and then in a year, he said, they should be done. So he was excited to kind of get that in place, things they're going to get rid of, things that they're going to do, and he was pretty pleased with that. So that was their biggest news, is moving toward that, and the commission's full.
Yes.
Yeah.
The one meeting that I've had, they're all coming up next week, are, I had sat in on the Sustainable Environment Commission, and what is really cool about what they're working on right now is that there's a lot of overlap between the commissions. The Parks and Rec Commission is sitting in with the Sustainable Environment Commission, there's overlap to talk about the use of pesticides in parks and see how we can come forth, or they can come forth with a proposal about what we should do. And then there's also a climate, a climate workshop that's coming up next week that the Sustainable Environment and the Parks and Rec, and we're all kind of gomishing into one big commission, so it's really cool, the partnerships that are happening amongst our commissions. So, that's what I have for you, sir.
Yeah, that was me and one of the sustainable commissioners, Carly Lilly, so she did a presentation to sustainable, sustainable development, no, they're not called.
Environment.
Environment Commission, and then, but Parks and Rec hasn't gotten involved yet because Dwight said he wanted to make it clear that they wanted to be invited before they did a presentation. So it's true what you're saying, but it's also respecting what each group is doing as their own record.
Sure. Okay. Jim?
I haven't attended any meetings since we last met, everything happens this week, Farmer's Market's tomorrow, and Arts Commission's the following week, so the only thing I have to report is in the last half hour, I was invited to participate in the firefighter stair climb again this year, and I fully intend to bring back a trophy from that this year. Last year was an introductory thing for me, but I plan to win this year.
Are you going to train this time?
Yeah, I'm going to train this time, and I plan to win my division and bring a trophy back for the volunteer fire department to put in their trophy case.
Right on.
There you go.
Walter?
I'm not going to do it. Okay. I had a lot of meetings, apparently. October the 18th, I represented the city at the Campus Community Coalition Meeting, where they discussed ways to educate college students at U of I regarding alcohol, the effects of it, the consumption of it, and how to moderate it, hopefully. October the 19th, I attended, along with several other people up here, the Water Summit in Pullman. They had one of the better turnouts they've had in the last several years. I thought the keynote speaker was excellent, a good time was had by all, and Paul Kimmel and John Kimberlin continue to press on with their efforts to educate the public about what's going on with our water. On October the 25th, Planning and Zoning Met, they continue to work their way through the chapters of the comprehensive plan. Michael Ray, all the kudos in the world, why he hasn't gone blind, reading the comp plan over and over and over and over again and making changes to it is beyond me, so that's progressing. On October the 26th, the Historical Preservation Commission met, and they are continuing to work their way through an interpretive sign, the first one will be put at the 1912 Center, and then there would be one at City Hall, and then one at the library, to explain those buildings and their history. So stay tuned to see those. And then the last thing was October 31, my wife and I went down and had a hoot of a time walking downtown with the streets blocked for... Jenny, how many kids came through downtown Moscow Halloween?
I didn't have a ticker, but we had over, what happens when I come on, when I, we had over 80 businesses participating.
80 businesses and?
We had, we had 2,000 pieces of candy at the chamber, and we maybe had 100 pieces left.
Okay. I talked to a lot of businesses that said, I bought a lot of candy, and I'm already out. So really good turnout, a really good community event, and those costumes are a lot better than what my mother used to put me in, I'll tell you that. That's all I've got.
Okay, Walter, Walter had mentioned the Water Summit on the 19th, and that was a very well-attended, the most I've ever seen in any water summit that I've gone to. And the neat thing about this Water Summit, that the most exciting thing for me was a solution to move forward with an alternative water supply, that is what's key, because we do need to move forward on that. And it, yes, it's going to cost some money, but boy, we need to move forward with that, and I think that's going to be the project over the next decade that's going to be very, very important for this community, Pullman community, the entire Palouse. On October 25th, we had an airport board meeting, and we're right on track with our runway, we're heading two more years, folks, so it's going to be kind of fun to see where we end up, it's exciting, and they continue to move dirt, although with the recent snow and those things, my guess is, is probably it's going to be a 2018 project now, I would guess. But there's other things they can do this winter, too, so they got that all lined up. Most important, and I wanted to say this again, I talked about the Veterans Day on November 11th at Bruce Pittman Center, Colonel Downing is going to be the keynote speaker, that's free to veterans, and one person can go with a veteran, and it's pretty cheap and inexpensive for non-veterans. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend because of a prior commitment, but that should be a fun night to honor our veterans. And I want to remind everybody to vote tomorrow. A big deal in our city elections, all these little local elections, we need to make sure people get out and vote, don't take it for granted, vote. Gary, do you have anything?
I have nothing, sir, thank you.
I just have one more announcement.
Okay.
Transportation Commission meeting is Thursday at 4:00, and the presentation for the traffic calming measures, the actual... calming measures, the actual idea will be put out, and they'll be answering questions and beginning to parse and figure all that out. So I know that there had been some interest in that.
Traffic calming for Third Street.
Traffic calming for the Third Street corridor.
All right. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Everybody in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. We adjourned at 7:50. Thank you, everybody.